The meeting is ordered. Ask for the delay. First thing we need to do is determine whether the appellants are aggravated or harmed by what the appellants want to do. So, the first appellant, excuse me, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given and we received five letters in support, all of which council has copies of, and one letter in opposition, also which council has copies of.
Okay. We must decide whether they're aggravated or not. And the first appellant was Jill Berryman?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Ms. Berryman, could you tell us how you're harmed by this application?
This application borders my land. I live at 8102 Leroy Street, so part of it would be cutting up right behind the top of my property line on the top and then filling in the drainage way to the east of me.
Okay. Council, Mr. Augustine, I'm sorry.
And your question is, Mr. Mayor?
The applicant's property, we're deciding if she is being harmed by this?
If she's an aggrieved party.
Yes, a aggrieved party.
Yes, I would consider she would be. She's, her property's adjacent to it, as she just said, so I think she's totally entitled to be the appellate in this situation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a motion?
I will make that motion, yeah.
All right, have a second, have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. The second appellant is Emil Gendrich, excuse me, sir, I'm sorry I butchered your name, I apologize.
It's Emil Gendrich.
All right, thank you, sir. Could you tell us how you're being objected or how the homeowners association is?
Sure, the homeowners association owns the common area that's immediately adjacent to this parcel, and we have concerns about, you know, runoff as well as the stability of the slope and the fill they're planning to make, because if anything happens with that, that would flow directly onto the common area and potentially impact the homes that are in the development.
Okay.
So, if I may ask you, are you the president of the homeowners?
Yes, I'm the president of the HOA, correct.
Are there any CCNRs in your HOA that talk specifically to this or other parcels immediately surrounding your area?
According to the CCNRs, the board of directors is allowed to pursue all matters that are called out by Nevada statute as an HOA.
Okay.
And I also have a petition from 33 of the homeowners that are in the association in support of the action of the board. And we have unanimous consent from the board, the three board members, including the developer.
We don't need to go into that right now, but the other part we do.
And I'm sorry, you said your open space directly abuts the property?
Correct. The common area of the HOA directly abuts the property.
Okay, yep, okay. I think he's an aggrieved party and can continue.
Okay. Make that a motion?
I would, I have made that motion, yes.
Second? Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. I'm gonna call the applicants, I'm gonna call the aggrieved people first. I'm gonna call the aggrieved people first to make their case or do, oh, let me, let's switch this around. Let me have staff do their presentation and then we can talk about it.
Good evening, Vern Close, senior planner.
Mr. Close, you can tell that I'm slipping a little bit, so would you excuse me? I have three, just a little, sir. I have three or four people wish to speak and I'm gonna call on them first, then we will get into the applicants and yours. Now, Mr. Snellgrove, are you making a presentation on this or are you making a three-minute comment?
Three-minute comment.
All right.
For the record, Dave Snellgrove with Wood Rogers. I represent the Heizer Shelton Properties, which, actually, if I could get the overhead, I can show the property location. This is one of the adjacent properties to the site. Try and get the whole thing on here. The TCA property is located here, the Flying J property is located here, both of those are part of this application. The Heizer Shelton property is an 85-acre piece over to the east. There was a map that was prepared by Flying J in 2004. Actually, we can scan that out. This map shows the Flying J property, the TCA property is over here off of this map. The Flying J property is here, and there's an easement that came in from the NDOT right-of-way that goes along the Simons property and the Flying J property and stops short of the Heizer Shelton property. As this is part of the application request, as the Flying J property is part of it, we'd like to see a condition added that would require that that be extended out to the adjacent property, to assessor parcel number 03916110. I put on my card that I'm in favor of the application, and I am. I would like to have a condition added in to identify that that be extended per this map that's before you here. And I'm in favor of the application request, because working as a land use planner and designer in this community for over 20 years, you know, some of the challenges that I've faced in projects with the hillside ordinance have been a little bit cumbersome. I'll give you one example of something that I had to face, and this was a few years ago, but the Wingfield Towers project had to go through a hillside ordinance review. I bring that up because part of their case is taking a look at some of variance requests of the hillside ordinance. Now, that's in downtown Reno, but that's the way the hillside ordinance looks at it. I think the hillside ordinance can use some change, and I think they're approaching this correctly.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask Mr. Snellgrove a question?
Sure, you sure can.
Just so I have this down, you said you want a condition added to do what?
I would like a condition added to, let me get this back up. You see this easement that comes along that was established with this map, which is a record survey map, 4484, from the Washoe County Recorder's Office. Comes up, the adjacent property is right here, this is the Heizer Shelton property over here to the side. It stops short by about 50 feet.
So, you want to extend the easement about 50 feet?
Extend the easement 50 feet, so connects. There's one access coming off of the freeway, and obviously that would be intended in the future to serve all the properties up here, and hopefully in time they will all get developed. And that access would need to be connected.
Okay, I'm just curious what the condition was, because I didn't hear it clearly, but it's to add, what the condition you want added if this proceeds?
That is correct.
Capital I, capital F, to extend the easement about 50 feet from the Flying J property to the current, to the TCA property?
Condition, I wrote, jot us something down. The condition would basically state that an easement on the Flying J property from the NDOT right-of-way from I-80 off-ramp shall be extended to assessor parcel number 0316110.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Snellgrove?
Yes.
Just, I don't know if you were gonna leave or stay, but on your property, do you have an easement that goes further to the property, so you're east to the tunnel up?
There had been something that had been worked on down through the Chalk Bluff Canyon area, down to Forest Street.
But would you guys agree to that easement through there?
I'm sure that that could connect on through, and I think that would give a reasonable roadway pattern to get access to the freeway, yes.
Not from the freeway, they'd have to go through Forest Street.
Well, it would come up Forest Street, it would allow people to give other access.
I'm just curious, you want these people to give you easements to your property, but you're not willing to give easements to the people further to the east of you?
I never, I never said that I wouldn't give an easement, or that they wouldn't give an easement.
Well, would you do that today?
No, I'd be happy to.
Okay, that's all I ask.
And, Mr. Snellgrove, have you had this discussion with the applicant?
Yes.
And are they receptive?
We've talked about, they have had, they have had people looking at the property and looking at a roadway access down that could serve sanitary sewer and some of the storm drain improvements, and that would go down to Forest Street. It goes through the Chalk Bluff property. West Haven Communities was the last group that looked at that, probably three to four years ago, and looked at the feasibility of it. I don't think that there is an existing easement down through Chalk Bluff, but I know that there are discussions that had gone on.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim Hallahan.
I'm in favor of the application. I think it's a threshold into town there, and I think it wouldn't cause any problem filling the canyon in to the neighbors below. I, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
We also have in favor of it Tom Coat, does not wish to speak. Also, we have a person that's, does not wish to speak, and they're in opposition, that's Doug Smith. Now, we'll call up Coral Paris, if that's right.
Good evening, Mayor and councilpeople. I'm Coral Paris, I live on Leroy Street, and I've lived there for 12 years, and I'm very concerned about this whole proposal. I don't think that the drainage should be filled in. I don't like the idea of the 6,000-something trips, daily trips that this will, it's on that card that will go up and down. I don't know if any of them are going up and down Leroy, but I imagine probably they will, I don't know. And I know that the whole filling in the drainage, I mean, I go up there all the time with my dogs, and I rode up there the other day with my horse, and it's just, it just seems like it would be really a terrible drastic thing to do, and would destroy the landscape, and also I don't trust that the Flying J doesn't have some plans to build something there that I don't think I would like. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Mailer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm here to support my HOA and my neighbors of the Truckee Highlands. I do not believe that the gentlemen have met the issues for the special use permits requested. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nina Swett.
Good morning, or, excuse me.
That's okay.
Mayor and councilmate, I am here trying to save the senior ceramics class. We have, there's, it's concerted with the Parks and Recs departments. Sparks does not have ceramic classes. Washoe does not have ceramic classes. Reno is the only place that has a ceramics class at the Parks and Recs, and we all would like to have that not eliminated.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was already, that was handled earlier in the day and was taken care of earlier in the day.
Is it good or bad?
Good.
Yeah.
It's good.
Mark Ray.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mark Ray, and I live at 2802 Outlook Drive here in Reno. Lori Ray is my wife. She spent many, many weeks and months and years on the hillside ordinance and the open space and greenways plan, getting them into the condition that they're at today. We were at the Planning Commission, ladies and gentlemen, on February 2nd, my wife and I, and we found ourselves with the staff and other people trying to explain and justify why we have these laws. In other words, it wasn't enough that there was a law. The people that are on the applicant's side, the hired guns, I called them at that time, the specialists, the engineers and people, were saying why these laws are no good. You got a little taste of that tonight from Mr. Snellgrove, didn't you? Like, this is, I have problems with the hillside ordinance, he said. So, at the end of the day, after everyone debated whether the laws were good and just, one of the commissioners said, "I can make the findings," without saying what he could make findings on, and they approved it. And I thought to myself, self, I'm a lawyer by occupation, and if this was the way court systems ran, or this is the way all the systems ran, laws would mean nothing, because when someone comes along with a special interest that doesn't want to follow them, and there's enough votes on this panel, we don't follow any laws. Because you know, and I know, nobody can make all these findings. Nobody can make any of these findings. They're just flat against the laws of the city of Reno, the hillside ordinance, open space and greenways plan, all of the laws that you follow. So, I'm here to ask you to say to these people, fellas, you know, Mr. Malev, the attorneys, the engineers, the people that are gonna tell you why the laws are wrong, we have to have standards, or why are we here? Right? Because if we don't have standards, and we don't have laws, we don't follow them, then we can all go home, and you don't have any job. So, one of the things you need to understand is, all they're doing, all they're trying to do here is fill in a natural drainage way, which they're gonna tell you is not a natural drainage way, even though that's what the city law says it is, to build a vacant lot, to increase the value of their property, so that someday someone can come along and put something on it. That's the reason. That's not a hardship, that doesn't allow for a variance, none of the findings can be made. Please follow our laws and apply our standards. Please make everyone follow the laws. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lori Ray.
Good evening, my name is Lori Ray, and I'm here representing Scenic Nevada. Scenic Nevada is opposed to the TCA project, which is contrary or in violation of many of the city's codes and plans, specifically drainage way and hillside and the master plan. The applicants want to fill in a 10-acre natural major drainage way, the same one that the city has been protecting by, in previous residential developments upstream from the project. At 210 acres, the watershed for this drainage way is twice the minimum standard required to be named a major drainage way. There's no doubt that the drainage on-site will be infiltrated and pollution minimized, but in the 100-year flood event, up to 200 cubic feet per second could flow down the existing natural drainage way above the project site into the proposed 1,200-foot pipe on the site, bringing pollution from the surrounding storm drains in the adjacent neighborhoods eventually to the Truckee River. Experts agree the best strategy for dealing with polluted runoff is to slow water down by minimizing impervious surfaces and minimizing the disruption of natural drainage and vegetation. So, it's pretty laughable that the project will include low-impact development standards. The applicants are replacing a naturally occurring drainage way with engineered mechanisms to increase buildable land. The project application includes extensive grading, which eliminates a majority of the 30% slopes, without providing the required mitigation, which is two-to-one replacement of undisturbed open space on the site. The applicants want the variance from the hillside ordinance to make room for 300,000 square feet of commercial space, but there's no hardship, and staff has said they can't make the variance findings. The reason the hillside ordinance was revised in 2004 was precisely to prevent this type of project, which could ruin the natural topographical features, obliterating wildlife habitat, and providing unusable open space and trails, not to mention the views from our road sites. Once flattened, the next property owners could erect digital billboards and flashing on-premise signs to attract freeway drivers on the north end of the site. The southern end will include 110-foot-tall slope. Mitigation of visual impacts was another finding that staff could not make. Stakeholders on the hillside revisions worked very hard during nine months of meetings to come up with a compromise in 2004. The city went to the trouble of paying for a consultant and arbitrator to attend the workshops. The city attorney, planning commissioners, residents, and developers all participated. The point of that exercise was to protect natural topographic features from being eliminated through bad site design that you'll find in this application. Scenic Nevada isn't asking the applicants not to build, but to be reasonable and responsible and do the right thing for the community. Staff has suggested a reasonable alternative, six acres, commercial on the east side of the property, 11.6 acres of medium density on the west, separated by the 10-acre drainage way, which should be left as undeveloped open space. The drainage way can be bridged or filled just enough to put in a road crossing at the north. Please deny this project as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Having no other public comment cards, I'm gonna bring it back to the table now for discussion, except we're gonna go now to the, now we're gonna go to the staff report, and then we will have the appellant.
Good evening, Vern Close, senior planner. As you know, the Planning Commission reviewed this case on February 2nd. A majority of the commission could make the findings, and they recommended approval. That's essentially my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time.
Okay. The appellant, Ms. Berryman, you have 15 minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that we go in reverse alphabetical order. On February 2nd, I didn't know my neighbor, and I didn't know the president of the homeowners association. Since that time, we've worked together to put together a presentation for you, so that we can walk through the steps, and he actually put it together, and I would prefer that he went first and presented that for you, and then I'll finish up and answer any other questions that you might have.
You're fine, come on up, sir.
Thank you.
I didn't want to butcher your name a second time, because you're gonna have to teach me how to do it.
It's Emil Gendrich, and Jill and I put together this presentation that you're about to see. You have speaker's notes that were distributed to you via email the other day, as well as you have a copy, a hard copy in front of you today. As you know, this is basically the matter we're here to discuss today. I represent the, myself as an individual property owner, as well as the Truckee River Highlands HOA. The board of directors unanimously supported our opposition to this development proposal. That includes the developer representative, who still owns 26 of the 72 lots. I have a petition here signed by 33 homeowners. They were all in unanimous support of the work that the board is doing against this proposal. So, let's actually just do a recap of how we got here today. So, on July 7th, the city council approved the master plan zoning amendments for these parcels. In that, in that motion, Councilman Guston agreed to approve the master plan amendment with the understanding that the applicant should recognize that the drainage way is all-important, as is the buffering that maintains the integrity of the neighborhood. In addition, councilperson Hatchiff stated that there will have to be a compromise made because with all the SUPs and adequate mitigation that will be needed, the current proposal is not appropriate for this site. Those are quoted from your city council minutes in July. TCA Properties acquired the property back in 1999. That was about seven years after the Reno municipal code sections on hillside development and drainage ways were passed. The master plan policy, the master plan and policy have not changed since the applicant acquired the property, and as Lori Ray mentioned earlier, the hillside code was strengthened in 2004, where they increased the amount of open space dedication from one-to-one to two-to-one for slopes greater than 30%. This is a summary of their proposal, which I will point out is wholly unchanged from what they presented to you back in July on the 7th. They're calling to fill a 10-plus-acre natural drainage way, which is identified in the city's major drainage way map, with about 850,000 cubic yards of fill to a height of over 100 feet. They're gonna create a pad of about 500 by 600 feet wide, which is approximately seven acres. They're planning to channelize 1,050 linear feet of the drainage way via an approximate 800-foot-long pipe that's six feet in diameter, that's gonna be buried 80 feet in the ground. As part of their proposal, they're dedicating 1.52 acres of open space in comparison to the code-required amount of 20.4. These are views of the drainage way from the common area. I'm standing in the common area. I took these photos last Sunday. The first view is basically looking up to the freeway. You can see the drainage channel that basically meanders up along, up to the freeway, the little, the little, the little light poles you see, those are the poles from the freeway. If you look down the drainage channel, it leads to the Riparian Corridor that's just beyond the Highland Flume, which is pointed out there. The homes that you see are my neighbors on the right-hand side. In the Planning Commission presentation in February on the 2nd, John Campodick argued three points in representing the TCA proposal. His first point was that science says that there is no significant environmental impact. He also cited the issuance of an Army Corps of Engineer permit for channelization, and he called it, you know, what might be the biggest thing on the table. And he also implied that the federal course process supersedes local jurisdiction. Yet, in the staff report email, the Army Corps clearly states that nationwide permits do not obviate the need to obtain other federal, state, or local permits, approvals, or authorizations required by law. Also note that the jurisdiction of the Army Corps extends only to the approximately two-tenths of acres of water at the bottom of the channel. Finally, in the proposal from the applicant, the proposed preservation of two-and-a-half acres of wetland mitigation are actually the same acres that were dedicated as part of the Truckee River Highlands development. So, in effect, they're asking for mitigation for something that was previously mitigated as part of the development of the HOA that I'm part of and represent. So, they're trying to double count. And it's not clear from the email that the Corps actually knows this. This is a picture of the entire drainage way that basically shows, A is basically where the HOA property is, and basically the drainage way continues up, crosses Charlins, crosses Man, goes all the way up to the North Gate Golf Course. John claimed that this is a disturbed drainage way due to the road crossings, so no, so basically no further disturbing it should be a problem. However, one of the things he said that was most interesting, and this is at the 52-minute, 35-second mark of the Planning Commission meeting, is he said, quote, "The code says no, and the master plan says no to the proposal." I find it very odd that there's no mention of this in the Planning Commission meeting minutes of 2:11, both the draft version as well as the final version that's now published at Reno.gov. If you look at the areas of real disturbance, the areas of real disturbance are fundamentally the dumped fill that you can see adjacent to I-80. It's not the drainage way itself. The picture over on the, in the upper right-hand corner shows the dumped fill in that roughly two-to-one slope going toward Robb Drive. The disturbance isn't from the road crossings, as you can see from the picture on the left, because you can see the channel of the drainage way basically continuing up toward North The Planning Commission results, I don't think, made the findings they needed to make. The four commissioners who made the findings provided no justification to counter the staff recommendation of denial. They failed to specifically address the individual findings, nor did they provide any rationale for their decision. According to their meeting minutes, Commissioner Romeo stated that the drainage way has been disturbed many times, and that it is no longer a natural or major drainage way. He stated he could make the applicable findings to approve both the SUP and variance requests. The two commissioners who voted against approval actually cited specific findings they could not make, which are listed here. At the meeting, Vern commented that there were alternatives to the design being proposed that would significantly reduce the encroachment on the drainage way, thus reduce impacts to riparian wildlife habitat while enhancing and preserving the drainage way. However, the applicant did not consider any alternative designs and ignored the guidance they were given by the city council on July 7th. If you look at this picture, this is the satellite photo, you see the disturbed part of the drainage way, which is the fill. You see I-80. You see they're planning to basically fill the whole thing. At the very bottom is the Riparian part, and the, and the light, white area is, that's, that's basically, that's Anselmo Drive. And to get a road crossing, they probably need to span less than a quarter of this, not the whole thing. So, we took a look at the findings, and here is a list of the findings that we were not able to make for the different, you know, basically for the special use permit, for the special use permit for hillside development, for the special use permit for disturbance of a major drainage way, or even for the variance. I'm now gonna walk through some points on those individually. So, with respect to the special use permit, you know, is it compatible with the surrounding land uses and development? If you look upstream and downstream, certainly not. You know, they're proposing to basically channelize this natural stream environment, which as you see has water in it, you know, that spans some 1,050 feet. If you look at the master plan, then it's not in conformance with the master plan in terms of, the master plan under E3 says natural drainage course should not be channelized. There should be no net loss of stream environments. Under E3, sorry, under E6, 11 and 31, there should be protection of the wildlife and, of the major drainage ways and wildlife habitat. There should be a retention of natural features, and then there's objectives on-site design, natural features and natural slope. We don't think they can make any of those. This proposal doesn't satisfy any of those. If you look at what they're planning to do, this gives you a good sense of it. 850,000 cubic yards of fill with a slope of 115 feet tall at two-to-one, that's gonna basically tail in toward those homes that you see right there. The picture at the lower bottom corner, they're gonna basically level off those two hills and essentially obliterate the natural course of the landscape. Look at the picture on the far-right-hand side. If we look at the hillside development, they're supposed to make an open space dedication. The open space dedication for the, in this case, is calculated to be 20.4 acres. They're planning to dedicate 1.52 acres of open space. That's not even 8%. Even if you basically said, "Let's take the code that was in existence at the time they purchased the parcel, they'd be required to dedicate 12.9 acres of open space." 1.52 is less than 10% of that. If you look at adherence to hillside design and master plan provisions, drainage way will not be piped and/or filled except to construct paths or necessary roadway or utility crossings. You don't need a 500-foot-wide pad to basically- You don't need a 500-foot-wide pad to basically span the two development parts of this parcel. For reference, basically, the, um, the width basically of I-80 is about 400 feet. The applicant is going beyond what is needed for road access and creating a building pad, approximately seven acres. You can see the newly created land there. If they basically wanted to do just a roadway crossing, you can actually see in white the roadway they're proposing, they would probably need to fill that area, which is again, less than a quarter. And if they did that, they would be able to dedicate the required amount to open space and basically adhere to the law and the code requirements. If we look at the mitigation of the visual, if we look at mitigation of visual impact, this drainage way basically has a 90-degree jog. If they basically fill the upper part for the roadway crossing, you will not be able to see most of that, because it's basically around the corner. You can see in the map here from them where the jogger bend is in the pipe. That's roughly where the channel itself bends. Here's another look at the jogger bend. We're looking north, basically to I-80. Downstream of the bend, you kind of see the undulating course of the canyon. The jogger bend's in the middle. Again, here you can see it from further down. It's kind of around the corner. Again, you see the power, you see the light poles from the freeway in the background. And I think there's a truck on there. If we look at the finding for the SUPs for disturbance of a major drainage way, they need to provide for maintenance and emergency access. Their proposal is one 80-foot-deep manhole that would go down to serve a pipe that in conjunction with the pipe for I-80 is, I think, 1,230 feet plus or minus. That's almost a quarter mile. That violates the 600-foot maximum in the Public Works Design Manual. And, you know, if there were a blockage because of the bend in that pipe, think of how difficult it would be to get a person down there with tools and equipment to clear it. If we look at accommodation of the bicycle pedestrian path, the current path basically takes a very nice taper along the slope of the hillside. They're going to have to basically do switchbacks up a two-to-one slope. That's going to potentially create erosion problems. That's suboptimal compared to what we have today. If we look at the visual and aesthetic impact, when I met with the applicant, they told me they were going to replicate essentially an outlet similar to what's there. You can see the graffitiized version of what flows under I-80 today. The contours that you see in, from the public road at the bottom would be eliminated, and the outlet would basically show up in this picture under the flume. If we look at the impact on wildlife and water quality values, in the upper corner, you can actually see there's water, and actually there is a flow. And there, I was there earlier today, there actually is a flow today as well. There's existing wetlands downstream. They're going to basically, they're proposing to channelize it with 800 feet, and they're providing no mitigation whatsoever. You know, the 1.52 acres of open space doesn't do it. The two-and-a-half acres they want to take credit for are the two-and-a-half acres that are existing wetlands, which were utilized for the Truckee River Highlands development. On the variance, the properties, you know, is the property characterized as an exceptional situation? It's not. They're creating their own exceptional situation by proposing a fill that would reduce their developable land to 7.3 acres from the 17.4 if they developed the two parcels. If we look at whether there's a hardship, they purchased the land after the regulations were in place. If they did their due diligence, they would know what the rules and requirements were at the time. Their desire to fill the drainage way into manufactured, assailable land is not a hardship. The property can still be developed as two parcels and, or linked basically via minimal fill or a bridge. Staff suggested that in their report. And then, as I said before, oh, sorry, that bullet shouldn't be there, excuse me. And finally, you know, is this consistent with the intent and purpose of the ordinance? It completely ignores the ordinance, and they've basically made no attempts to modify their proposal to accommodate it. They're attempting to circumvent all ordinance and regulations, and that's just not right. Just because science says you can do it doesn't mean it should be done or that it's right. If we look at the reasoning behind Commissioner Romeo's assertion that the drainage way is no longer natural or major, fundamentally, that's irrelevant, because even disturbed drainage ways are afforded protection by the Reno Municipal Code. Even if we assume that there wasn't a drainage way, and it's just a canyon, right, with hillside, then the other findings still need to be met. And no matter what we've, you know, what we've looked at, we can't make those findings. So the first one, again, I'll reiterate, the open space is not sufficient. And the second one, in terms of, is there a hardship here or not? Mr. Krampotic's testimony to the City Council back in July said, "The developer is attempting to plan a project that makes sense in today's economic climate and needs the entire site in order to do so effectively." However, he added, "He is not aware of how many acres are needed to make the project profitable. Without a detailed financial analysis, there can be no demonstrated hardship." So in conclusion, if you think about it, oh, something wrong with this slide. "Their prime motivation, obviously, is to maximize the value of the property at the expense of the natural topographic features of the land. From the time of purchase of the property, TCA has worked to bypass all existing rules and regulations to make its project gratuitously profitable. Completely filling in the drainage way lets it manufacture additional land to sell. From the time of purchase, the site was subject to development restrictions, and asking for those to be waived only results in a financial windfall for TCA Properties." We don't see how the Planning Commission could make the findings, as evidenced here, and there's an appendix in the materials I've given you that does a point-by-point breakdown. "We simply shouldn't waive the master plan and city codes and regulations just because science says it's possible. As I said before, lots of things are possible. That doesn't mean they're right. In addition, if this, if this application is approved, it sets a dangerous precedent where fills can be used to manufacture land and not just for access. In this case, we'd be completely obliterating a natural feature of the landscape. We didn't do it upstream to North Gate. We didn't do it through the Truckee River Highlands development. We shouldn't do it downstream either."
Okay.
So we urge the City Council to overrule the Planning Commission decision and send TCA back to the drawing board to develop a new proposal that basically respects the importance of the drainage way and comes up with some alternative.
Thank you very much. Ms. Berryman, will you allow for him to use a minute of your time? So you go ahead.
So...
Start the clock, please. He's going to use, start the clock at more than a minute. Start it at the 15 mark, and we'll let him use, Ms. Berryman? Ms. Berryman, is it okay if he uses some of your time? Okay. Start it at the 15 mark and go from there.
So I'm sorry, I'm almost done. So the, the bottom line is, we would like the City Council to overrule the Planning Commission decision and send the developer, TCA Properties, back to the drawing board. They need to come up with a proposal that respects the natural constraints of the land, that's compatible with the codes and regulations, and that isn't as invasive, and that better basically complies with the spirit and intent of what the codes call for. And Jill will conclude with some additional points.
Okay, stop the clock, please. Okay, Ms. Berryman?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I really don't have a whole lot more to say, and I don't want to waste your time. You're all capable of reading. The findings are at the back. Emil did a great job of pointing them out to you exactly. One of the things that should be noted, and that has been noted before, is there is a herd of deer, so there is wildlife that lives there, although their reports say no. In the staff report, you will find several photographs with the herd of deer that live there. I've lived there for 13 years. The deer have been there all the time that I've lived there. There are also raptors, hawks, bunnies, squirrels, and variety of other various wildlife that makes it impossible for me to grow a garden. But I put up with that because that's where I chose to live. Mr. Krampotic, in his remarks in February, continued to talk about the landscape as ephemeral. The definition of ephemeral is one time, one day, very short-term. I, I would beg to differ with that. This drainage way has been there probably hundreds or thousands of years. Ephemeral is filling in the drainage way and sticking a pad on top of it. I don't feel that the one access through the manhole is going to be enough to, to take care of that. I was here in the 97 flood. I am part owner, my organization's part owner, of the Riverside Artist Lofts. I have sandbagged there several years since the 97 flood. I know what kind of trees and other debris can get, come down and go through a natural drainage way. I, I would respectfully ask that you consider the things, the points that we brought up today, and the fact that we just can't make the findings that they're saying are possible for the special use permits. The only other one I wanted to point out was that, you know, in the code, it, it, this is being called up as a special use permit because the fill is larger than 10 feet in height. The fill for this is 10 times that. It's 100 feet deep. So if you take the Riverside Artist Lofts, add 20 feet to it, and drop it in that drainage way, that's how deep it is. So I just wanted to give you a visual. Thank you very much again for your time. If you have any questions, Emil or I would be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you very much. We'll bring those up in a minute. Now we'll hear from the applicant, and then we'll hear from staff, if you have some more. Aplicants, you have 15 minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. John Krampotic with KLS Planning, representing the applicant. Mr. Mayor, I don't have a full-on presentation. Of course, we had, thought we had an approved project, and of course, we wanted to hear from the appellate and respond to their, their testimony. There are a couple of things that I do want to put into the record, though, however. And I think what's really important, and for example, Ms. Berry, and just, Ms., Jill Berryman misspoke about saying, "I use the term ephemeral," and it's wrong. And, and the thing that's concerning to me is you got laypeople making statements that that's not, that it's not ephemeral, and I got a water of the U.S. study done by a local biologist that did a wetland delineate, or, or looked at it for wetlands and said it's an ephemeral drainage way. So when I say things like that, I say them with a basis of, you know, a scientific basis and a statement of fact. And I just wanted to put that, can I, can you get the screen on?
Yes, if you put your, put your map now.
Here is the water, here's the water of the U.S. survey, and here is the statement about, you can see ephemeral in there. So just a point there. The other thing, I, I would hope that the council completely discounts 100% of Mr. Jandurik's testimony, because some of that is very misleading. We did scientific study and investigation of this, this drainage way with professionals and all of the other, all the aspects that we could possibly look at with respect to the drainage way. And I'm talking about hydrology, infiltration, the biology, the wildlife biology, and plant biology. We, we looked at all of, everything that we can think of with respect to environmental consideration and find nothing that's significant about doing what we're doing, not damaging to the environment. And I think that's further most asserted by what the Army Corps granted as an approval to this applicant going back about eight years. And, and that is absolutely an environmental permit by any estimation, and that with the mitigation that these gentlemen offered back then, it was satisfactory to the Army Corps. The whole idea there, the single biggest issue on the table was that, "We're here to protect the Truckee River. That's a tributary of the Truckee River." And they were happy with the proposed design of what we're doing and the mitigation to, to the, the environment. And what, when I talk about Mr. Jandurik's testimony and discounting that, the thing that, everything that we've really premised our approach on is making sure that we all embrace that this is, in fact, a disturbed drainage way. And I want to share with you the, the city definition of a disturbed drainage way. It's not my definition, if you could please... And so, you see, natural, I've got circled right below it. But to me, this is the whole basis of our case, and...
Read it to us, so we know what you're...
You bet. "A disturbed drainage way, major drainage way which have been or will be significantly graded, filled, or otherwise altered by man." So, Mr. Mayor, we have five road crossings up above the property, right next to a major crossing at the freeway that's 500 feet long. The thing is cut off, the entire watershed is cut off at the North Gate Golf Course with a giant pond there. And, and there's no, I mean, this is a statement of fact. You cut it off, start in a new, start at the drain, at the detention basin, cross it five times, get to the site, cross it at a freeway, and then down below the site, there's two more road crossings. On that, on that definition, I don't know how we call it anything but disturbed. And if you acknowledge that it's disturbed, then what we're doing is very responsible. We've done all the scientific analysis and study and come up with mitigation, and, and I think we have a very good design solution. If, if you go along those lines and believe that it's disturbed, and you think the Army Corps permit has basis in this, then what it really reduces this to, in, in our view, is a, a visual issue. And I have some photo sims that I think, again, are done by professionals that look, make it, I want to show you what it would really look like rather than what the gentleman showed you. That was very, very distorted and cartoonish, and it's just something that we shouldn't put much emphasis on. So here is, by the way, the only, the only place you can really see the drainage way from is from the south, and it's kind of a small bend in there, south, like Plateau Road, and then of course, directly south of the site. So there's the drainage way you can see on the left side of the screen. And here is a, a photo simulation of how we would have that finished look. And you can see, there's no damage, there's no, you, you, you don't see it because we carefully grade it, landscape, but put those top rocks in there, and it has a very finished, nice appearance. That's the idea with all the design team putting in their talents to this. So really, our, our key point is about disturbance, and then allowing us to do what we want to do. Couple of people touched on the, the staff compromise about trying to span across the drainage way and having a little development pad on the west and the east, and that simply doesn't work for the site. You know, there's a giant investment, multiple millions of dollars of investment to do what we're trying to do, to create a good usable pad. We put frontage next to the freeway, and we look at a partial fill, and we say, "What does the community gain if we were going to fill 400, 500 feet of this drainage way?" If it kills the project, and the community doesn't really gain in this partial fill, then, then why even consider that? And so, they're, they're willing to invest $3 million in earthwork and all of the engineering that goes in the drainage structure, and then, but with that, that, that gets us into the 20-something-on-acre pad. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor and Council, and I'll be here for questions. Thank you very much.
Anybody else from the appellate, I mean, from the applicant, wish to speak? Okay, because you got eight and a half minutes if you want to use them.
Well, could we just, you know, Mr. Mollath is here, and he has a lot of expertise in land use, and if, maybe we could reserve that time for, for rebuttal? Could we do that?
I'd rather, I'd rather you make the presentation now.
Stephen Mollath, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My observation on this is really whether it's a disturbed drainage way or a natural drainage way. And, and that's, that's where your focus really needs to be. And, and I think if you look at all the information provided by the applicant in the application, the drainage studies that were done, the hydrology reports, the engineering reports, it is very clear that this is a disturbed drainage way. Now, I understand fully the concerns of, of the people who live below that. It's always difficult when, when there's development next to your property, people have, are concerned. But the focus that needs to be from a legal perspective is, is this disturbed or natural? And if it's disturbed, you, you look at it in a completely different way. If it's natural, you look at it in a different way. And I would submit to you that that's the focus that you have to look at. Technically, is it a disturbed drainage way? And if it's disturbed, then the, the special use permit that we're asking for, the cut-and-fill applications are appropriate. And now, it may very well be that, you know, we have to do a little bit more designing or fine-tune it or tweak it. If the council feels that that should be done, we're, we're more than willing to say, "Okay, let's take a, a 30-day hiatus and come back and tweak it a little bit to, to address some concerns," if you have a concern in that regard. But the first element that you have to make is, is this a natural drainage way, or is it a disturbed drainage way? If it's a natural drainage way, then, you know, I mean, we're in a whole different ballgame. But if it's a disturbed drainage way, then the inquiry has to be, do you go ahead and approve it in the condition as applied for with the conditions that are set forth by the applicant? Or do you send it back for a period of time for a little redesign and tweaking with staff to make sure that the impacts of, of this design in a disturbed drainage way takes care of the concerns that the council has? I think that's kind of where, where it's at. And so, beyond that, I, I'd be happy to answer any other legal questions, but I think that the issue really is a technical issue. Is it disturbed, or is it natural? And, and I think that the engineering people are the best people to address that. I, you know, I don't know from a legal perspective whether it's disturbed or not disturbed. All I can do is look at it from an evidentiary standpoint, and I believe it's, it's certainly disturbed with all the things that have gone on, on this drainage way, beginning all the way up to North Gate, coming down to the freeway, and looking at all the fills. But it's a technical issue from an engineering and planning, not a legal perspective, and I by no means are telling you today that I believe from an engineering perspective it's disturbed or undisturbed. I think that's something that you have to decide based... I think that's something that you have to decide based upon the technical evidence presented.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Now let's bring it back to the table for discussion. Mr. Guston.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Trying to go through this on a bunch of different questions and comments that I have. First of all, the appellant's presentation, Mr. Jan Dorick, is that am I saying your name right? And the quote is absolutely correct. I agree to the, approved the master plan amendment, understanding the applicant should realize the importance of the drainway, drainage way and all the buffering that needs to be maintained. Excuse me for going back and forth here, but Coral Paris got up and said that she'd lived on Leroy for 12 years and there were, mentioned 6,000 trips and she hoped there wouldn't be on Leroy. And one of the things that has always been paramount in my mind, first of all, for the people who live around there and have said this a couple of times regarding the mitigations, no traffic on Leroy or Mesa Park. And how could we ensure that? So let me, I'm going to go back and forth if you don't mind, but let me, let me call the applicant up. And it was, I said this before, Mr. Krompottic, when we were, we first talked about this. And so a primary concern of mine, if this does go forward, and I always put the disclaimer in, if it goes forward, is that Mesa Park and Leroy do not need any traffic from any development up above in their neighborhood. So how would you, how would you prevent that?
Could I, thank you. So here's kind of, you know, big picture. You see the access coming off Barab Drive, access easement through that yellow property which people know as Flying J. We have a frontage road adjacent to the property, two points of access. And what we would have right here, it's, it's detailed that you wouldn't have at this stage, but we would have an emergency access gate if the fire department wanted it here that would then just trickle down the road and have a connection to freeway, but, I mean to Leroy, but only as a emergency access.
Okay.
So no, no traffic at all on Leroy, given that the opportunity we have to tie into a interchange.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Along that same line, I know this has been, it just kind of, I can hear the fingers going down the chalkboard when I hear Flying J. Councilman Azzi and I, he smiles now, but, but that, I mean, that's just so far removed from our consciousness that, that Flying J, I wish we'd call it something else because that's not part of what we had ordinance has put in, that there couldn't be a truck stop there and there's not going to be. And so I know there's still a fear about that, but believe me, unless the other six people want to vote differently, and I don't think they do, there's no Flying J. So if you take that out of your terminology, I'd be pleased about that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess, you know, it's interesting, my number one question, Vern, I'm going to call you up because it seems it's, it's a point of contention on, on both sides. It's a master point for both sides. And I don't know that I have the technology understanding totally, but, and Mr. Mollath said this, because there's my number one question, is the area disturbed, natural, or I think that the third way a drain could be landscape, but is it a disturbed or natural drainage way? And why or why not is it one of those two?
Vern Klos, senior planner. Per the major drainage ways plan and the ordinance, this, when the major drainage ways plan was put into effect, this drainage ways was identified as natural. I-80 was there, Mayan was there, the pond was up in North Gate Golf Course. This was identified as a natural drainage way. I even think that the crossing for Avenue de Landa was built before the drainage way plan was put into effect. So from the master plan and the ordinance, it is identified as a natural drainage way. I can see why they could believe it is disturbed or identify it as disturbed because there has been road crossings basically of, of the drainage way. And that is allowed on a natural drainage way. Our road crossings are allowed. But filling in significant sections is not allowed per the major drainage way ordinance.
So the difference you're pointing out is it can be crossed and still be a natural, but if it's filled in, it's not allowed, you're not allowed to fill in a natural drainway, drainage way?
That is the intent, yes.
What, what else, what are some of the other, in our area, some other drainage ways that could be, you can identify, so I get a visual in my mind, some natural drainage ways?
Well, a larger one is the Chalk Bluff Drainage Way to the, to the east that runs to the west of the Rainbow Ridge Park.
I know where that is.
That's the area where we just put the wetland mitigation feature in, in just west of the park in the drainage way because that one has water in it, I think pretty much year-round. And it was helping to reduce the water pollution in that particular drainage way. Trying to think of another one. Need a map. Well, the Rosewood Wash obviously is a major drainage way. But up in the McQueen area, there are several, they come down and, and I think the Chalk Creek is probably one of the larger collectors of the drainage ways in that area. Summers Head has several major drainage ways running through it. Most of those were left open except for road crossings. There was one fairly large fill, but that was related to getting in to the, into the site. We know where the town center is, that area there, there were some major drainage ways there. There was one large one, but in general, those were largely left intact.
And you may have answered this on the, on the previous question, we talked about natural, because that, that's, that's your contention that even though it has been crossed, it still remains a natural drainage way?
That's, that's what it was identified as when the plan was put together. No one has to this point said that it wasn't until this project came in.
Were those crossings put in after this plan was put together or before that?
Most of them were done before the, before the plan was put into place.
Okay.
Plan was put in place in 92. I know the North Gate Golf Course has been there since the 80s. And I know that Avenue de Landa was built and Mayan Avenue were both built, they crossed that drainage way, I believe, before the plan was put in place.
So I was looking back and reading the report on page 192, and you don't have to go there, but it says that the, and in exhibit one, when you read that, it says, "The foothills of Peavide Mountain are the headwaters for the drainage." But by the report, an independent botanist says on page two, "The unnamed tributary starts north of I-80 and flows in a southeastern direction and then passes under I-80." What I'm trying to get at here is, you said earlier, it was a natural, when, if it flows, if it's cut off and flows from North Gate, not from Peavide, that doesn't change your definition of natural or disturbed?
At the time, it was designated as such that that was not, was not mentioned, you know, that wasn't pointed out. It was just, if you look at the maps, when this was put together, that was, they had N's on them and D's on them, and this had an N, which was natural. And if it was disturbed, it had a D on it. And that particular, this particular drainage way was identified as natural. Whether that was done correctly or not, that's what we are working with. And that's the position that we've taken.
Let me ask you just a couple more things. I think both the appellate and the applicant referred to the Army Corps of Engineers. Might have been Mr. Ray when he spoke. But let's see, the, the Army Corps in, in May of 2005 verified and authorized an unnamed tributary to be placed into approximately, and I'm assuming it's the water that's coming down the drainage way now, 1,050 feet of culvert and to place 852,000 cubic yards of fill over the entire 16.3 acre development without any reference to the source of water flow. Does that mean that, that putting in the culvert and the fill were recommended and approved by the Army Corps of Engineer twice or however many times they did that?
The Corps, the applicant, I believe the property owners went to the Corps, the Corps approved that permit. We never, we were not aware of it until this project came up, that there had been a nationwide permit approved on this section of the drainage way. I spoke to the Corps about this and they just reissued the nationwide permit in, I believe, October of 2010. And when I spoke to them, I asked them, you know, why did you do that without consulting with us? And essentially, the person there said that all we were doing was reinstituting what got approved previously and that even though they had approved it, all necessary approvals from the local agencies have to be obtained before they can do this. So their approval in of itself does not necessarily mean that this is from the local perspective, a good idea. It just means from their perspective, it's, it's acceptable to them.
Okay. If, as they're talking about this 1,050 feet, if there's a culvert put in there, are there specific directions or guidelines of how big that culvert should be? And if so, why? It's, it's to carry water, obviously, but what, what are the, what are the minimums or what are the specifications to put a X size culvert in, in a drainage area?
Well, I know what the size of the pipe has to be. I'm not an engineer as far as how they size it, but it's a 6, 72-inch pipe. And that's based on what the expected flows would be coming down the drainage way in total through that whole system. So that's, they would size it accordingly. So in order for them to put that pipe in, they would have to provide all the hydrology studies to show what the necessary size of that pipe would have to be. And then also that the design of it is acceptable as far as access and maintenance and those sorts of things.
Seems to me that, if I remember correctly, being in the flood committee, that a 72-inch culvert or six feet would carry the flow for, as we talked about this much, about a, what, 100-year flood? Is that the determining factor? Is that why it's?
Well, again, it depends on the size of the drainage. And we have engineering over here that could probably answer those questions a little bit more specifically if you want to ask them. I know generally what they have to go through to do that. But it would be based on what is the expected flow through the channel? That's how they size the pipe. And it's, yes, generally for the 100-year flood.
Looking, I think that's all I have right now, Mr. Mayor. Okay, that's, that's all I have right now.
Okay, Mr. Azzi.
Mr. Krompottic? I'm looking over what a disturbed drainage way is.
Yeah.
How long would a drainage way have to be, say, from the freeway before you would say it's no longer disturbed? Or does one crossing make it a disturbed drainage way?
Say that again, please.
Well, let's say that this, this whole drainage way was unencumbered at all except for Interstate 80. Would that then be considered as still a disturbed drainage way in your mind? No matter how long it is between Interstate 80 and Peavide or between Interstate 80 and Truckee River?
You know what? We're in the gray area, right? I, I mean, I think something that's compelling here is that it's right next to the freeway or just trying to connect up to that. And that the site.
And no matter how far it goes down from there, no matter how much it is, it's just because if I start the freeway, I can keep making the case that it's disturbed and keep building from the freeway out and filling it in?
When I read the definition and I talk about, and I know that there's seven road crossings, one of which is a freeway, to me, that represents disturbance per the definition. No other way of looking at it.
Well, let's say there's seven miles between this, two road crossings. Is that seven miles then considered disturbed?
I don't know. I, I mean, we all have our own opinion about it and.
That's what I'm asking for, is people's opinions. You're telling me you have all the experts that are giving me the opinions.
Well, no, but some of this is, some of this is in the, there's a qualitative part of this, right? You got the science, but then you also have open space connectivity, tributary connectivity.
And my staff tells me it doesn't meet those.
Well, you know what? I'd be glad to go up there on a field trip with you and you feel trapped in there. One, one of the things about an open drainage way, natural drainage way, is that you, it feels open, it appears open, and you have pedestrian connectivity through it. This thing, you get trapped in there. You run into a freeway embankment.
But I'm saying, how far does it have to be? I mean, the Grand Canyon has Hoover Dam.
Yeah.
Must be, must be impeded now because there's one crossing there that I feel trapped when I get close to Hoover Dam.
Yeah.
So I should be able to start filling it in.
Completely different animal, though, isn't it?
I should be able to start filling it in from Hoover Dam out because it's, it's now disturbed drainage way.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm saying this one is disturbed. There's enough on the table. You know, when you.
Only because you're next to Interstate 80? Or would you make the case if it was a mile away, it would be disturbed?
I don't know. It's, it is a very unique site to have these kind of conditions right next to the freeway. And to me, it's really about a landform that we're changing, topography. And, and the Army Corps, the Army Corps permit, Dave, really kind of made me think about this, is you got a tiny skosh of water at the bottom. Our civil engineer did a hydrology study and told me in a 100-year event, there's two feet of water at the bottom of that. So you, you got this, you got the V, you know, that I call the V.
So what, what created that then? I'm curious, what created this thing? This huge 100-foot, if there's only two feet during a flood? Water creates that, doesn't it?
The landform?
Floods, yeah.
Yes.
You're telling me that just a two-foot length of water every 100 years created that thing?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. What, what I'm saying is, the fact that we cut it off at the North Gate Golf Course, it definitely carried the Peavide watershed, but we completely cut it off and started all over right there. And it completely changed the flow characteristics. I don't know what it was prior to the freeway and prior to the North Gate Golf Course. It was probably something a heck of a lot more robust.
Now, when, when the appellants start talking about when these things were put in.
Yeah.
This property was purchased prior to all this. When you bought it, you knew that that was the designation. Right or wrong, that was the designation?
I didn't, have nothing to do with the ownership, just so.
I understand.
You said you bought it, I don't have.
You represent the owners.
Yeah.
That's the way I'm referring to it then.
Yeah. You know, what you could do is look at the natural drainage way definition if you want, because Vern just mentioned.
I mean, the definition under our city code.
The natural drainage way definition. It's funny, if you look at that, it's further away from that than it is disturbed. Natural, provide for filtration, infiltration? There's no infiltration.
Natural provides for draining of 100 acres.
Pardon me?
Provides draining of 100 acres is natural, correct?
No, that's just the criteria to kick it into a major drainage way classification, which is a very crude classification. Doesn't mean you have a lot of water. It means it's major by ordinance.
Part of the things you're asking for though, is because there's been a change in the area.
That's correct.
But nothing has changed here from when you purchased. I started trying to establish, city didn't make an ordinance or change an ordinance or change any of our codes from the time this property was purchased until now.
I believe you're right. That workshop that evolved in the, you know, the drainage way ordinance and hillside ordinance change was eight years ago and they, he said they had the property since 99. So there you go on that one.
And the, the open space issue where you want to not have to put in the open space for the three to one ratio for the hillside ordinance?
Well, that gets into the variance findings. We got a double count thing. I think Mr. Mollath would, would, you know, probably deal with that one more. There's a technical issue that really leads to a taking issue, I believe. And that is you're counting the same property twice as drainage way in hillside. Just double, double counting the exact same property twice and it gets us into a box where you can't.
You mean because they're counting both sides of the drainage way?
No, the drainage way is counted as drainage way up to the top of the slope and then you count it again as hillside. I, I can't fathom that concept. And I've mentioned that to staff. I said, I don't know how you can double count that because it basically yields their property down to nothing usable when you get into that open space calculation.
Now, from what?
So there's, there's the basis of the variance.
I might be able to buy that one, but they said also that it would have been 25 acres and now it's only one acre?
That's, that's a layperson's calculation, which I have no confidence in at all.
Well, what, what would it be then?
It, it was about 20 acres, I believe, total. Did you say 25?
Well, I've just sort of paraphrased.
20 on, on the ordinance, the way it is.
So the ordinance is 20 and you're proposing how much?
I thought it was about five. He said 1.5, so I'd have to look to the staff report on that.
So even if they double counted, it should have been under your scenario, at least 10?
It's more, there's more to it than that. What you talk, there's a two to one ratio for the area that's disturbed. If you look at it from the way I'm, if my rationale has some legitimate basis, you would deal with the drainage way. If you were successful, you'd process that permit, fill the drainage way in and pipe it, and then the hillside goes away. But you're not going to double count it. So there would be no open space. So there would be no open space.
Okay. And if this isn't approved, your property can still, this property can still be developed, correct?
I would say that it will never be developed.
But I didn't say whether it would be. It could be. I mean, you could, couldn't you, you have property, part of it abuts Leroy.
That's right, yeah.
So that could be developed off of Leroy, correct?
That little SF-15 parcel?
And the other half could be developed from the freeway.
From the freeway, meaning coming through the interchange and then on the east side of the drainage way?
Right.
If, you know, obviously, market and economics and all that comes into the equation when you're rolling the dice.
I'm just seeing if it's possible.
Yeah. It's physically possible, probably never going to happen as a practical matter.
So how much did they pay for the property?
I have no idea.
Will we find out?
One of these gentlemen, who's a principal here, might be able to tell you if you dare want to get that out of him, but I don't know and it's just-
You guys are talking about how it doesn't pencil out. How do I know that?
Okay. You and I, you know, that's funny you say, Dave, because I think about 10 years ago, you're the only person I ever met as an elected official who asked me about senior pro forma, right? Generally proprietary. Think about the simple numbers here. If we were going to fill this and there's $3 million of earthwork costs, plus the drainage structure, energy dissipator, all of the off-site improvements from the interchange, right? You have, say, four or $5 million of investment, forget your land price, before you have anything even coming out of the ground. So you need a certain amount of real estate, right?
But if you don't do that, I mean, you're making the case, and this is also what I said 10 years ago, if you're coming to me telling me that it doesn't pencil out, then we should be able to see your numbers. If that's the case you're trying to make to me that I can't make money. It could be the difference in I can't make 10 million, I can only make 9 million. Or I can't make anything or I'll make something.
Okay, let's make it simpler. There's no market for a dysfunctional piece of dirt like that. Basically, what you would have is-
I'll give you 20 bucks.
What's that?
I'll give you 20 bucks.
20 bucks, you got a deal. Look at the shape of the land. Look at the shape of the land there. What would you do with something like that?
Well, why, again, then why'd you buy it?
I have no idea. You know, I mean, obviously, they want to develop it with this intent. And I mean, there's a whole nother story that-
I guess what I'm getting to, too, is we had the same discussion last July 7th and we talked about this before.
Yeah.
And it seems like it all just went on deaf ears. Doesn't matter what you said then.
Actually, we've done an awful lot of scientific analysis and engaged all the different professional disciplines to say there's no significant environmental impact in doing what we're doing, as much as the appellants are taking it.
Even taken, given that, our staff says it doesn't meet code. That's why you have to apply for a special use permit.
That's right. And we have a use permit in a variance to make our case, right? Obviously, the variance is part of the equation here, which we haven't talked a lot about. The meaning of code, I mean, it's about this drain, it's about this disturbed versus natural argument. It really is.
Okay. Those are all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Asher?
Yeah, these, not for you, John, this would be for Vern and then maybe for you, John, later on, because really, I didn't, I really, you know, having been around when we went through the hillside ordinance and really the major drainage way ordinance, looking at the definitions and how they interact and intertwine, I want to make sure I understand, you know, the, because I went through the staff report, obviously, and the difficulty that staff had trying to make the findings. But to John's point, I guess the first thing I do is I look at the definition of a drainage way, right? And that really is defined as a drainage way that has some or all of some characteristics. And those characteristics are they drain an area of 100 acres or more, there's got to be biological or physical characteristics, connect neighborhoods, provide continuous system to provide pedestrian, bicycle or wildlife corridor opportunities. Are those disjunctive? If I find any one of those characteristics, do I now have a drainage way, putting aside for a moment whether it's major or not?
Well, the first criteria for a major drainage, Vern, close to your plan, the first criteria is it has to drain 100 acres, which is-
To be a major.
To be a major, correct.
How do you define, but major drainage way, there's two components, major and drainage way. How do you define a drainage way? What is a drainage way? And what I understood is it has some or all of certain characteristics, one of which would be, as I understood it, these factors. Is that incorrect?
Well, the way the ordinance is structured, it's just a major, it's major drainage ways. There isn't a definition of a minor drainage way.
So the trigger really is just it drains a land area of 100 acres?
What's the acreage and it has these characteristics associated with it? Some or all of those characteristics.
Okay. So it has to at least drain a land area of 100 acres?
Correct.
Okay. And then assuming it doesn't have any of these other characteristics that I mentioned, is it still a major drainage way? I know it has to at least drain 100 acres of land, otherwise, we're not even talking about major. Or do I have to have the 100 acres or more of area that is being drained plus these other factors?
In looking at these criteria and the way this is written-
The word you're looking at-
I'm, well, I'm looking at the conservation plan, the major drainage way section, which I believe-
Is that in the staff report?
Those areas are in the drainage way section of the staff report that says, let me-
Because I was looking at a different-
Do you have a page number?
Well, you guys have different page numbers than I do. Cut some fills. It's on, well, on the, on the staff report, it's on page six. No, wait, that's not, that's not correct.
Because we have standards, we have characteristics.
Let me go back. No, actually, on page six, it just talks about what natural drainage ways, what's supposed to occur with natural drainage ways.
Right.
But the area I was citing, it's in the conservation plan of the master plan. And let me get back to that. And that's where it says that, and that's where it talks about major drainage ways. Major drainage ways, drainage way which drains a land area of 100 acres or more. Major drainage ways are further classified into natural disturbed landscape, major drainage ways. These drainage ways have some or all the following characteristics. And when the plan was put together in 92, that was, everything that was determined to be a major drainage way had one or more of these characteristics in addition to the 100 acres or more drained. So that's why they're listed that way.
That's what I'm trying to get to, because to me, it's, is it more than just finding that it drains into 100 acres? You have to make that finding and then you've got to make another finding that it has these characteristics? Or do I, do I forget about the other characteristics I mentioned and just say, "Look, it just drains 100 acres"? That defines the drainage way as a major drainage way?
Well, that is the primary characteristic, but those other, those other five criteria are associated with a major drainage way. And this particular drainage way does have some or all of those characteristics.
Okay. All right. All right, that's, I guess, the first step for me. Then the second one is disturbed and natural. And the other thing that wasn't clear to me, if you go to a line on a map like we have and it says, "This is now a major drainage way," to Mr. Kompodik's point, if it's been disturbed upstream, so to speak, away from the property line before and below, above and below, I think your testimony was there was never any fill, there was disturbance, but road crossings are allowed. Is that an exception to disturbance?
For a major, a natural major drainage way, it said that, it says, and I believe it's in the report, but it's in one of these areas here, it basically says that all natural drainage ways must be preserved as open space. That's on page six of the staff report.
Right, and I've got that.
All natural drainage ways shall remain undisturbed. No grading shall occur within the drainage way except for what is required to construct paths, necessary roadway or utility crossings. And in general, that's basically what's happened on this drainage way. There are a number of natural drainage ways that the only way you could get to someplace was to cross it to property that was zoned for development.
But what about his point with North Gate? That basically stopped. I mean-
Well, the upper reaches of the drainage way, there's two little branches that come down to the pond that was constructed with the North Gate Golf Course. They use the water they capture there to irrigate the golf course. And then there's a spillway there that goes into the drainage way and then the drainage way, except for the dam and the several road crossings, those are basically the disturbances that are in the drainage way.
So I guess I'm not clear, why wouldn't that disturbance count to say that this drainage way that they're talking about on their property has been disturbed?
Well, a natural drainage way allows the road crossings.
Right.
Yes, that is a disturbance, but it still is classified as a natural drainage way.
Understood, but now, well, I understood the road crossing, but what about the pond that they had, the golf course? I guess the part I'm struggling with is I've got a long line on a map that says it's a major drainage way. Then I have a portion of that major drainage way that's on this applicant's property. And he's saying, "Hey, it's disturbed. It's not disturbed on my property, still pretty much intact, as I understand it, but if you go up a few more miles, look up at North Gate, they've disturbed it." Because Rod, according to you, and you're right, road crossings don't count, but if you go to the golf course, it's disturbed, it's not a road crossing, so it's, wouldn't be an exception. So if it's true that is disturbed, does that mean anybody that has a parcel along that major drainage way can then argue it's disturbed and then have a different criteria that they have to live by as to a natural drainage way? Because it's one or the other, right?
Well, I guess the basic way to put it is that when the plan was put in place, that pond was there. A number of those road, most if not all those road crossings that are there were there before the plan was put into place. And it was deemed a natural major drainage way. So that's what it was determined to be at that time. Whether you want to argue if it's disturbed or not, yes, there have been disturbances, largely roadway crossings. But when the plan was put into place, rightly or wrongly, it was considered a natural drainage way. So I-
But you're saying that the pond at North Gate was prior to the plan, the ordinance?
Yes, the North Gate Golf Course was built before I came to work here, which is in the late 80s, and this was put in place in 92.
So is that why staff determined that, obviously, we're not in favor of this in the staff report, was because all of these disturbance, whether they're roadways or ponds or whatever, on this major drainage way corridor, they were all done prior to the ordinance?
A majority of them, yes. If not all.
Okay. And then now, on this issue, so on page four of the staff report, you indicated that there's really a counting by the applicant on the Truckee River Highlands residential subdivision. They were trying to count the open space, trying to get credit for somebody else's open space and somebody else's parcel. Did I read that right?
They were, they were required to restore that area as part of the Truckee River Highlands and now they want to take the .2 acres of riparian habitat on this site and replace it in that area and they're saying they're doing it 10-to-1. If that overall acreage is two and a half acres, that's more than 10-to-1, but it was already there and it's constructed as mitigation for that project. That was a cluster development, which basically their SF-15, they built like 5,000 square-foot lots and the reason it was clusters is they left the drainage way open and they left the steeper slopes undisturbed so that they could get their cluster development. So from our perspective, that mitigation was required for that and the Corps thought it was a reasonable thing to allow them to count that as mitigation, but it was, from our perspective, the mitigation's already there.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to make sure I understand some of the comments that I saw on the staff report. And then on page four, at least on my page four of the planning commission report, your report, it looks like on, there really, there's really appropriate mitigation, it's A through E. So when I went through the staff report, you couldn't make, you couldn't make the finding in A you indicated, but you were able to make some of the other findings, correct? On the mitigation?
Well, B is not applicable because there's no fence treatment. C, the pedestrian bicycle path, we believe that with it open and the existing roadway that's on the site would very nicely cover as a pedestrian bicycle path versus their alternate route, which is a little bit more difficult to construct because it comes down this area of the site. It does follow contour here and then it has to go down a steeper area here and this, over 1,000 feet goes down about 20 feet, basically with contour all the way, so it wouldn't even, they wouldn't even have to really do much to it to make it a pathway. And then also, the issue about connectivity with pathways and bicycle paths. In the Rosewood Wash, they, the council just considered rerouting the path out onto the street because they couldn't get the easement up the Rosewood Wash so that, you know, we could continue the trail. And there's a number of areas, and those are kind of the problems with roadway crossings of drainage ways, is it makes it difficult to provide your continuity of your paths. But there's a path in the drainage way in Charlotte that comes up to the freeway and then it goes east over to Robb Drive, then you would go across Robb Drive, across the road here, and then it would connect into, again, the path and the drainage way. And that path is shown in the McQueen Plan as a pathway, a conceptual route.
I guess what was clear to me, because you were on C, were you able to make the finding on C? Looks like D and E you could not. C is the path.
C, I think A was questionable, B is not applicable, C, the existing situation provides a much better solution. The visual aesthetic, basically, you have a drainage way there right now and what they would do if this gets approved is fill it in and create a 20-acre pad, just a 20-acre flat pad across this whole area, that pink area there is about 20 acres.
Then the other, the other thing I saw on the variance for the hillside ordinance, there's a requirement that there be an offset. If you take open space, you have to provide open space. So if you run the formula, they would have to actually provide about 20 acres of open space because they're actually taking some. And then you couldn't, apparently couldn't make the findings for that because whether it's 1.5, 2, or 5 acres, whatever the number it is, it didn't meet 20. So you would have to apply for a variance if you didn't want to commit, you know, the offset.
Correct. If you disturb slopes of greater than 30%, you have to replace them someplace on the site at less than 30% at a two-to-one ratio.
Correct.
And that's with the 20.4 acres. They proposed about four or five acres, but all but 1.5, 1.52 of those acres are being replaced on 30% plus slopes, either created or existing. So you really can't move that disturbed area onto a 30% plus slope because that doesn't meet the ordinance. So what they're really providing is 1.52 acres that complies with the ordinance.
Okay. Well, the purpose of my question is to kind of go through and make sure I understand what staff's position is in the staff report, so I'll give Mr. Kompodik an opportunity to respond.
What I wanted to, the other point about disturbance here, Mr. Asher, is look at this subdivision right here, down below. I just, here's your channel, you can see the vegetation there, then you have a road crossing, then you have a 4th Street road crossing, and you completely fill in the drainage way between there and the river, from 4th Street to the river. I guess, I mean, that is absolutely disturbance by any definition. That is, the drainage way goes from its point of origin, I mean, starts at Peavine, we cut it off at the North Gate Golf Course, put it in a giant pond, have the road crossings. Now, there's a little bit of confusion and I think, you know, Vern touched on those about whether you can or can't with regard to its classification, but then you got it completely filled in from 4th Street to the river, wiped out for, it has to be-
Do you know if that was done before or after the ordinance was-
That I do not know, but I believe that that was done in my time in this profession, which was less than 20 years.
It's not.
What's that?
Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. Just for the clarification, that drainage way is open. It's right there. It runs right between the Lavender Farms and the Mobile Home Park. So just want to clarify that for the record.
It's completely graded and disturbed. It's completely graded and disturbed.
It's concrete. I mean, just a statement of fact, we, we shouldn't be discussing that.
Is that true, it's, it's a concrete?
Uh, I believe it's like grouted, similar to concrete.
Okay.
It's concrete.
But...
But it is open.
Was it done after?
I, that Mobile Home Park was done right around the time the ordinance went into place, so I'm not quite sure if it was done just, it might have been approved before the drainage way ordinance or plan was put in place, but it's, I would have to check when that Mobile Home Park was built because that's how that got in the, in the situation, is the grouted, concreted, um, situation.
Okay. I want to give Mr. Campodoc a chance, so let's all have fun.
Okay. Ms. Adra.
Oh, sorry, don't, don't go away, thank you. I'm still trying to understand the distinction, and, and so, John, I need you up here as well. The, the difference of the applicable portion of the, the one point five two versus the twenty. So I want to understand what you guys think you're proposing, and again, repeat your determination based on how the code spells out the, the ratio.
Vern Close, Senior Planner. Um, I believe you're talking about the open space requirement and the disturbance.
Right.
The ordinance requires that if you disturb areas of greater than thirty percent, that you have to replace that two to one someplace else on the site at less than that. So based on what they've proposed to disturb and the slope calcs they provided, about twenty point four acres is required based on what they're proposing. They are, what they are proposing is approximately one point five, five acres that meets the ordinance. They are proposing, what was it, five point four, but most of that, well, all but five point two acres of that is on areas that is thirty percent or greater, so you can't count that because it's not at less than thirty percent. So you can't count that as required open space.
And John, how do you respond to that? How do you, you calculate a different?
Uh, we, you know, we've made it, the application shows we calculated five point four, provided per the ordinance, and asked for a variance on the, the rest of it. The thing that's being missed, we're dealing with an environmental issue and trying to put it into math, and it's very complicated to look at it that way. The question that I would have for you, Ms. Adra, is what's the value of the thirty percent slope? You know, we haven't had anybody make a cry for this being a jewel in the community, that thirty percent slope, it's just slope. And we don't, and so that is all part of the rationale for the variance. And yes, so we provide five point four, there's no open space today, they're calling it open space and trespassing, and, and, and the variance is for the, the, the rest of it, but again, the key point here is about, it's just slope. It's barren, there's no rock outcroppings, there's water at the bottom of it. And, and that's where we're, that's, that's where we went with it. The finished slope, by the way, the, you know, the outside and the finished product would look very nice because that's where we do use nice revegetation, landscape, trees where the pipe would come out, and so you'd have, you know, it's just, it's, it's very awkward when you do this and you think you're making it look better than natural, but we're getting penalized for calling our open space, providing our open space as disturbed open space. Well, what if it's beautiful disturbed open space? The code doesn't look at any of that. And, and, and Vern's looking at it in fairness to the ordinance, just looking at the numbers, but we have a completely different, completely different perspective.
Well, I think we, we hear that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'll bring you back in a minute.
Thank you.
Vern, Lori Ray expressed that there is unusable trails, and on page five, I'm, you know, reading what you had in that planning commission's report regarding trails. Is it because of the sloping? Is that what she's describing as unusable? And what actually is required in our trail and open space plan? What is required for trails that connect, the connectivity?
Vern Close, Senior Planner. I'm not, I, I'm assuming you're referring to what their alternative route is compared to what you could get if you left the drainage way open. Right now, there is a, an old historic road that's about two thirds of the way up the slope on the east side of the drainage way that basically follows contour right down to, almost to the trail that's running east-west along the flume there. And that would work very, that with minimal improvements, you could construct a trail there. What they're proposing to do is, I've got a map. Their, their conceptual plan is to run along the east side of the site, follow contour, and then do a few switchbacks in the common area of the, the Truckee River Highlands, which they would have to get an easement for, and there's a condition to that effect if it gets approved. It's not the best alignment, it probably could work, but the existing alignment is better in our opinion. But it, it, either way, it could probably make, could be constructed to meet, the requirements would be a four to six foot wide DG path or something like that with appropriate drainage, that, that sort of stuff, and then they'd have to restore whatever they disturbed on the edge, you know, to construct it.
The wetland, not the open space, but the wetland mitigation that Mr. Jen Durick, if I got that right, described, that it's point one nine acres, and that it's, that that too is a double dipping. You're referencing double dipping on the open space. So how, how do you evaluate that criticism or concern that was expressed by the, the appellant?
Well, the, the mitigation is already there as far as I know, so they're proposing to say, okay, I'm going to take out this small strip of riparian vegetation and replace it down here in a place I've already replaced it as mitigation for something else, and as I said earlier, it satisfied the Corps. But the Corps is looking at the waters of the United States portion of it, which is the bottom portion of the channel. We're looking at the hillside, we're looking at the drainage ways, we're looking at the cuts and fills, we're looking at all those, ask the trails and all the findings that go along with it. There's what, around nineteen findings that need to be made to approve this project, and it was difficult for us to make a number of those.
Well, and the Corps is actually, the very next question that I want to ask you about, you said that you talked to them and asked them, how could they extend that approval without even having talked to you? When you had that conversation with them, did you talk to them about what criteria did they use for making, for approving it? And to be able to identify why you and the Corps had such opposing thoughts about the, the application?
Well, again, the person that's there now wasn't in the office when the previous approval was done, and what she explained to me was that it had been approved before, and they were meeting the same criteria, so they reissued it. Nationwide permits are not super complicated as long as you meet the mitigation that the Corps is asking for, and they provided it. But she did say that if they came in again, that they might look at it differently, and the rules might change between now and then if, because I think the, the permit's good for two years, and if it expires again and their rules change, then they might look at it differently, but until, I mean, that's kind of speculation on what might occur with that, but we were concerned that we weren't even informed about this at, you know, in any iteration.
And that's one valid concern, but I would think you would also ask them, I mean, when we get a project from you that's been continued and we get the history, I would, I would expect that the Corps has the same kind of, of record keeping, it shows the history so that they could have turned a couple pages prior and told you, yeah, we approved it because we could make these six, these six findings.
Well, and, and that, no, that's what, that's what they did, but again, they're looking at the, the twelve foot wide strip at the very bottom of the channel, and we're looking at the whole site based on the several ordinances that are in play here.
John, you have a response to that?
The Army Corps permit was not as simple as just renewal. Vern's right that they issued it originally, issued it again. The last issuance was in October of last year, I believe, and the Army Corps criteria changed, and we needed a waiver. And they signed out, the waiver was for if you exceed three hundred feet of fill, that you have to get a waiver from the Army Corps, and the Army Corps approved that waiver. The point being, and we, we were completely off track on this issue about double dipping and getting credit for what went down at the subdivision down below. It's an environmental permit, and the mitigation offered downstream satisfied the Army Corps in terms of the riparian area that was established, and it provides an area for sedimentation of this drainage way at a ratio ten times better than what's on the site. That's the environmental issue that's important, not whether or not we're double dipping, that has nothing to do with anything. Does that make any sense?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay. Could I touch on the hillside ordinance one other time, too?
Sure.
You know, Mr. Azzie put me on the spot about disturbance and all this, and I feel very much on the spot, but it, it's, it's good, kind of cross-examination, but I, I want you to, if you could show a little bit more of this. There's a picture of the drainage way, and some of this is obvious disturbance, you can see the freeway here to the naked eye, that looks like disturbance. I'm not going to tell you that it's disturbance, but you know, you look at this site and you can see that it was grading for the freeway, that there's manmade slope here, manmade slope here. You know, that's just the on-site property. We've been talking about disturbance in a different context, downstream and upstream, but that is a, a photograph of the property, and it shows some manmade elements which suggest disturbance. On, we'll come back to the hillside thing if you have any further questions. Thank you.
My last question, Lori Ray, is actually for you. Are you still here? Oh, you moved. I'm looking for you back there.
Lori Ray, I was just asking her about the, what the flood plain, what a drainage way is, and it's the flood plain and the fifteen foot setback, so I don't know if that disturbance they was talking about up there is actually part of the drainage way. Just thought I'd point that out.
Can you help me understand? I'm, I read the, you're a member of the Neighborhood Advisory Board that reviewed the project in May.
Right.
And I was reading your comments that sounded considerably different to my interpretation than what, than what I heard from you tonight, saying that because of the freeway, you think that the master plan amendment is a good idea, and that it's good to see some open space, and that the developer may be able to provide a trail, which is a good idea. And then continue to say that the open space trail and the open drainage way is good for the community, when the project comes in, that we need to protect the drainage way from being piped if possible, and to watch out for billboards, they shouldn't be allowed, and especially the digital ones. But the comments you made tonight didn't sound as supportive, so I'm wondering...
Well, you get a lot more, you don't get as much detail, excuse me for interrupting you, you don't get very much detail at the Neighborhood Advisory Board meeting, you only get one side of the story, and it's the developer's side who says he's going to have open space and a trail. And they really, I didn't realize the extent either of the drainage way, but I thought, you know, you shouldn't be filling drainage ways, and I did put that in there. So I don't really think you get that much information, if that answers your question. I mean, you find out everything in the staff report and going to the planning commission meeting, but just from what he said, I thought, and I still feel like, and we, Senior Planner agrees with, the idea of having commercial along the freeway and maybe medium residential and commercial on the west side, so I don't think it's inconsistent.
Thank you.
Mr. Dorich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'll start with Vern. And Vern, when, when was the designation of a natural major drainage way given to this, this drainage way?
As far as I know, when the major drainage ways plan was put in place in ninety-two.
And who made that determination? And how was it made?
It was done, staff went out in the field and went up and down drainage ways, and we, we had USGS quad maps, and, and we went up and down the drainage ways and designated, you know, made recommendation on, on designations, but the whole plan was approved by the planning commission and the city council, so it wasn't like someone went out and just designated drainage ways and there was no review of it. It there, it went through the public process to get put in place.
I understand, but I'm assuming that the planning commission and city council didn't go out and walk every drainage way, I'm assuming that that was...
You're probably correct on that.
Right. And, and, I mean, looking at the picture that John just put up of the drainage way itself, and it shows the disturbance along those two walls, you wouldn't consider that a disturbed drainage way?
Well, the disturbance on the north side is the fill from the freeway, and as I said before, a roadway crossing is an allowed disturbance on the, on a natural drainage way. I would say that that, that slope to the east is, was probably disturbed as part of building the freeway.
Okay. And, and if it's determined that this, this is a disturbed drainage way, how would that change your analysis in the staff report?
Probably not much. The drainage way might get modified a little bit, but the slopes and the variances, I, I don't know what their hardship is that they need to fill the whole entire site because they think they can mitigate the visual impacts. Is that a hardship that they bought a piece of property with a drainage way running through it that has steep slopes on it, and there are a number of master plan policies and ordinances that say that these things should be protected? A, a minimal crossing is, is a possibility that they could do to develop both sides of the site. Also, I believe that the east side of the site could be combined with the property to the east to make more of a development and...
But wouldn't you, you would eliminate one special use permit completely, wouldn't you?
No. Disturbance in a drainage way is a, is a special use permit whether it's disturbed or not. Naturals have more protection than disturbed, but all major drainage ways, if you want to put a roadway crossing, fill them, modify them, whatever, requires a special use permit, so the special use permit would still be in play.
Okay. And then, I don't know if this is for John or Steve, but the, the case has been made that even if, even if we determined that the drainage way, I think it was even said that in their presentation, that if the drainage way wasn't there, there's still, we still can't make the findings. Have you looked at their analysis of the findings, and do you have a response for that?
I, I do not, but one, one thing I, Vern, could I, for a moment, have that last visual that you had up with the trail map? If I can address that, and I think I'll get back to that question that you had. My foot, while he's getting that, the way I look at this, we have the issue of whether it's a major drainage way or not, and then the next level of inquiry, is it disturbed or natural? That's kind of where we are. But if, and, and I'm looking at this from a legal perspective rather than an engineering perspective, but I think that's a, a factor that you have to look at. What, what strikes me from a legal perspective is you have the freeway in there, which is obviously a major, it's just not a little road, access road, it's a, it's a major structure which spills over onto this property. Then you go south, not seven miles, not a mile, you go, you know, feet south to the southern border of the property, and then you run into the subdivision, and then you run into three other crossings where the ditch is, and then you run into Fourth Street, and then you run into the subdivision across the street. So what we have is, is a, a drainage way, and certainly there's water that comes through the culvert in this one space where this property is. So the question really becomes, is it major to the extent that it conveys water? Maybe, but is it disturbed or not disturbed? And certainly, when you, when you talk about disturbed, you have to look at the whole drainage way, and is this something that conveys water from a great distance down to the Truckee River? That's from, from a legal perspective, that's how I kind of look at it. This slice of ground... This slice of ground that sits on this particular piece of property is where you look at to determine whether it's disturbed or not disturbed. And I look at it and say, "This is a disturbed drainage way." So, that gets you to the point where, okay, it's disturbed, then we have to look at what the conditions are in the mitigation, because that's really what we need to talk about here, is not whether it's disturbed or not. I think it's absolutely disturbed. How do we deal with this disturbed drainage way and go to the conditions? Now, it may very well be that we have to get a little more input as to what those conditions should or should not be, and I think the applicant is open to doing that, maybe take 30 days and deal with that issue. But I think we're past, from an evidentiary standpoint, to the decision point that this is disturbed. Now, it's really a question of where those conditions should, or how those conditions should read, or what mitigation should be. I mean, I can't imagine that when you look at that piece up there, huge freeway, everything upstream, come across the property, three other crossings, development in between, that's a disturbed drainage way. So, that's just my observation.
And I tend to agree with you on that issue. I think it's what I'm saying, though, is the appellant actually brought up other issues, not just related to the drainage way, but other issues that they don't believe you've made the findings, or that the planning commission has made the findings on. And I was just wondering if you have addressed those, or if John has addressed those?
You know, I don't have the answer to that, because I don't have the technical expertise to look at that, but certainly, those are issues that deal with mitigation and conditions that we have to look at. It's not an issue of whether it's disturbed or not. I think we're past the disturbed versus non-disturbed issue when we're down to the conditions. So, it may very well be that John can address those, and certainly, the objectors to this bring up some valid points. I mean, they have a say in this as to what mitigation has to be done and what conditions have to be placed on this, but I think we're past the disturbed versus natural. And, you know, hopefully, you're there, I think I'm there from a legal perspective, and we really should be talking about conditions. And if we need a little more time to work that over the next 30 days, I think that may be appropriate, but that's a judgment call that the council has.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Doritz. Mr. Hashif.
Be for Lori, I guess. Because the applicant made a point, it says, "If you look at that line that says this is a major drainage way," I don't know if I necessarily agree with Mr. Moll, that it's a foregone conclusion that it's disturbed, but the point was made by Mr. Kompadik that if you go take that line, that major drainage way line, down to the bottom of the site, wouldn't you agree it's disturbed? Because now it's, although it's not filled, it actually, it's, what did you call it? Similar to concrete, grouting?
Grouting.
Grouting, right?
That's what he used.
What's the name of that subdivision?
I don't know what the name of the subdivision, it's a mobile home subdivision.
Okay.
You're talking about this, right?
Right down there. River Walk, that's where.
Because I know you were there when we went through this, I mean, I wasn't here in '92, but, I mean, we went through some radiations of the major drainage ordinance, but if, in fact, and I agree with Vern, there's an exception. If you disturb it, and it's a roadway, it's an exception, so it's not really counted as a disturbance, but wouldn't that count as a disturbance? And I assume that if you can show disturbance anywhere along that major drainage way, and that will cover several miles and several parcels, does that mean the whole major drainage way segment is at risk?
I don't think so, but I wasn't around in 1992 when they passed the major drainage ways plan. I was participated in the Hillside ordinance revisions in 2005. But, no, I don't think so. I don't, I don't think so, no.
Okay. All right, that's all, I just want to make sure I knew how the appellant felt about it.
Okay. Mr. Augustin, do you have something?
No, I want to start the comment section on this, but if everybody spoke in their piece, then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Well, go ahead, sorry. Mr. Mayor?
No, go ahead.
Okay. There are a lot of elements that I agree with a lot of people that have spoken. I said earlier, and repeat, I agree with Mr. Moll about, the linchpin for me comes down to, my first question, is it disturbed or is it natural? But I don't think, I don't agree that, I don't think we're by that yet. Maybe legally, you think, I don't think we are. So, the question comes, and I should disclose, by the way, some disclosures. I did meet with the applicant's representatives twice, and I did talk to Ms. Ray, and I'm trying to think, I don't think I talked to anybody else, but I think I talked to those people. So, I still have a very deep concern about the definition and what it is. I thought Pierre was going to touch on that just briefly when he talked about the segmentized sections of the drainage way. So, does that mean that, are we talking about because from the north end of the property to the south end of the property, that may not be disturbed? I know Mr. Kompadik said that it was disturbed, he's put the picture up, at least he thought it was, and Mr. Close said, "No, that's just some of the fill from the freeway." So, is the fact that from the north property line to the south property line, that this is not disturbed and it's still as natural as the staff contends? Because it said it was natural when the plan was put together. And then, the water flow is interesting, because I did read in the report, we've been talking about the flow and the ditch being able to carry the water, and yet, when you look at, I'm looking for my notes here, that talks about, oh, when it, in the exhibit, Exhibit 1 again, going back to that, which I mentioned a long time ago, it's mentioned that the riparian vegetation contains Kentucky bluegrass, Canada bluegrass. So, I found that kind of interesting, kind of startling, but wouldn't this mean that the flow of the runoff would actually come from the urban environment up above in the North Gate area as opposed to peavine? And it has been cut off. What I do agree with Vern on is that in terms of the natural drainage way, accommodations are made, and it's still defined as a natural drainway, drainage way, when it has those crossings. I can't find anything that disputes that. As much as I would like to see this project go forward, because I think it's much more than just this area in this project, it's about the city of Reno and where we're going, and the economy, and what's happening, what would be successful. I've had a couple people call me about that, and at least try to lobby me on that part of it. But, and I talked to Mr. Hashif also, and he spent months on the Hillside ordinance putting that together. Now, the ordinance may not be perfect, and it may not be where it is, where it should be to accommodate exceptions like this, but it's what we have to work with. So, I still, I've tried my best, but I cannot find where it's a disturbed major drainway, drainage way. So, with that being said, if it is a natural major drainage way, I don't think that this project meets the criteria it needs to meet. As much as I would like to do differently, I don't think it meets that. Now, I think, Mr. Moll, you've been involved in land issues for a long time, and I don't know how you read the room that early, but you did, you know, you talked from your very first statement about a continuance and making that happen. I don't know if that's even the answer, because for me, it's still the fact that it's natural or disturbed. And I know we went through it, and I had the definitions from the applicant's representatives about disturbed. I just can't get to that point at, right at this juncture. So, if somebody else at the table can, I'd certainly like to hear about it.
Mr. Moll.
Maybe I have a solution to this, because obviously, the way I kind of read this here is, there is an issue as to how the ordinance is crafted and what is or is not a natural drainage way, and what happens under these unique circumstances. Now, a solution may be, is we take a break on this thing for 30 days. We go back and talk to our hydrologists, and have the hydrologists submit to staff their analysis of why it is or why it is not a disturbed drainage way using the criteria that hydrologists and engineers use. That's submitted to staff. Let's staff look at it, provide a copy to the opponents of this project, have them look at it, and provide comments, and then come back, and then, based upon that technical information, because what we've done today is kind of focus down the issue of this unique circumstance, and come back in 30 days and say, "Okay, is it or is it not?" Because I don't think we have enough information quite before us today to really make a reasoned decision as to whether this is disturbed or not disturbed, given the circumstances of this drainage way. I suggest that's a good solution. It's balanced for the applicant, it's balanced for the opponents, and also helps the staff look at it and say, "Okay, how do we interpret this?" That's just a suggestion, but I think it's probably a good suggestion, and then, when we come back, we're all informed, and there's nothing hiding around the corner, there's no unanswered questions, and a decision can be made, and everybody can say their piece.
Let me ask you this. I understand you take the experts' look at the hydrology, but then we come back to granting the variances for the open space, and it doesn't even come close at this point with, even if we accepted the 5.2 or 4 acres, whatever that is, and it's supposed to be 20, it doesn't even come close. And I'm not opposed to that, because I think there's some reasonability of what you're talking about, but there's still more issues that...
I agree with that, and I really think that, after listening to all this, I think there are other issues that can be addressed within this period of time that we can come together on and say, "Okay," because I've heard a lot of good comments here from the opponents of this project. And they're, and I've been in discussions here, you've seen me talking about it, and I said, "Well, there's something to be said about that." And so, during this period of time, whether it's a hydrologist, or a planner, or engineer, I think a little more information should be provided by the applicant. It's on us to do it. I mean, this is our project, we're asking you for something here, so we should bear the burden of that, but come back with any questions that you may have, not only whether it's disturbed or not disturbed, but, you know, coverage issues, trail issues, and we'll be happy to look at it. But at least then, we have everything on the table, because really, this is the first time that everything has really been aired in an open forum.
Well, I don't know, that's supposed to have been aired in the planning commission, so I don't know if I totally agree with that.
Well, that's true, but the issues weren't focused at that time.
But let me ask, let me ask you this, because it seemed that it was a gap that could be reached from staff's perspective and applicant's perspective, if there was somehow a bridge, because they talked about that, because they talked about, it's a natural drainage way, even though there's been other bridges in other parts of this drainage way, and that's still considered natural. So, if it was bridged somewhere in your property, although, in talking to the representatives from the applicant, you may not be disversed in it right now, Mr. Moll, but...
I'm not right now.
But the comment was, "We can't make it work with that, because it takes too much ground." Is there, for me to consider the continuance on this, is there a way that they, that, with all, you're talking about the hydrology and everything else, and whether it's a natural or disturbed, is there a way to make that work? Because then, then the people that are trying to protect the drainage way, obviously, they still get the natural drainage way, and you get the opportunity to develop your property because of the bridge.
We'll take a look. We'll take a look. Right? You're looking for a little further analysis and perhaps some compromise.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, that's what I have to say at this point. I'd like to hear other comments.
And I've done a lot of projects, as this council knows, and I see a gap that can be bridged in this thing, and that's what it takes in projects to do good projects. You need to have not a polarizing of the two parties, you need to have a convergence of the two parties.
And I know you all heard this before, but, I mean, that neighborhood, we crossed this table a couple of years ago, we went for that Mesa Park and that Leroy neighborhood, and when people wanted to cut the zoning down from acre minimum to half acre, and we just said, "Absolutely no, we're going to keep that integrity of that." I know you heard that loud and clear and buffering from them, and keeping the traffic off Mesa Park and Leroy, and another reason, I think Mr. Hashif asked this, or somebody asked about, or Mr. Kompadik talked about taking that small strip of land, and he could make a commercial, and it would come out on Leroy. They won't carry the load, won't carry any traffic loads to put any more traffic on that street, so I just say that in passing. Now, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, just briefly, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I would support a continuance, but with this understanding, you're indicating about bringing some more information in, whether that be wildlife, hydrology. I don't know if that's going to help, because if it's disturbed, that, none of those factors make the determination on whether that drainage way has been disturbed, so...
I would agree with that observation, but I think the data has to be looked at a little more carefully.
Yeah, I guess what I'm suggesting, I don't want to have to go through another whole evidentiary proceeding...
No.
That you're going to come back here with a bunch more information, and we're going to have to go through this hearing process all over again. I mean, the record's the record. If there's a way to compromise or come up with some kind of a solution that nobody's here thought about, but as I understand it, or maybe you can shed some light on whether it's disturbed or not, but it doesn't look like it's disturbed to me, because the highway, whether that's disturbance or not, apparently, it's still a natural drainage way, because they make an exception under the standards for roadways.
But of course, what you have to look at in this case is, this is not an ordinary roadway, this is an interstate freeway. And so, I think that's, I mean, I certainly understand that you can have a roadway crossing a natural drainage way that's not disturbed, but this is in unusual circumstances, and by no means would I come back to you and say, "We're going to have another evidentiary hearing." I would like to see, you know, a bullet point type of analysis from my engineering and hydrology staff to get in front of us the issues that we've now focused in on today, because now, this is, I look at this from my perspective, and I'm seeing a focus of all the issues that are out there to a very small point. And once we then can answer those in a non-large hearing context, and then address the other issues of compromise, and my, being quite candid, I would tell my clients to sit down with staff and sit down with the opposition and work this out.
Okay.
All right, and...
And I have the same disclosure, Mr. Mayor. I met with both sides, I met with the opponents, Mr. Kompadik, and with Lori, and then Mr. Augustin and I met with Mr. Kompadik and Chris Barrett last night as well.
Okay. Ms. Zavrazov.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, this is probably a first, where I didn't ask any questions, because I think that the council pretty much covered it, but just for the purposes of discussion, and Dan, it is your ward, so I'll support a continuance, but I think you said something extremely important at the beginning, and that was about the Flying J and how we did these zones and for the protections, and that's why we have a hillside and drainage, why we have these ordinances in place. And if it were on the opposite side and we were interpreting it another way, you'd be up here wanting to sue the city for taking away those rights, but yet, the homeowners, that's...
That's why I know women, my lady.
I mean, that's why we have these protections and ordinances in place, to assure the homeowners, that's why we work so very hard, Councilman Hashif, to his credit, and quite frankly, that's why I voted against the master plan amendment when it first came to us, because I had the same concerns about the intensity of the development by changing the master plan. It concerns me, all through the staff reports, staff, and I do think staff went through this analysis, when you're asking for, not only for the variances, which I don't see how we can make the finding on the variance, what the hardship is, that hasn't been presented tonight. I mean, you're not turning over your financial records, I think Councilman Azzie had asked that question. You know, it comes to the point, you purchased the property, you knew the designation on the drainage way, and I just have concerns about, you know, that's why we have these things in place, ultimately. And to go away from that with the variances and the permits, and I have questions about the open space and the double credit there, and I think staff is interpreting that correctly. But Councilman Augustin, it goes back to what you said at the very beginning, when we made those protections on the truck stops, that's why we adopt these ordinances, that's why we're doing the flood regulations that we do, and I just, I can't make any of the findings, so I just want to be upfront, even if it's continued, I just, I can't make the several of these findings here that are presented in the staff report.
You know, for both sides... You know, for both sides, just in looking at the definitions from the conservation plan, the city of Reno master plan, disturbed, talking about a disturbed drainage way, major drainage way, this is quote, "Major drainage ways will have been, or will be significantly graded, filled, or otherwise altered by man." Now, does that mean, this is where, I talked about the north property line, the south property line, does that mean any part of the drainage way, or does that mean, that's the thing I can't fathom, I can't get that out, is that any part of the drainage way, then it would be a disturbed drainage way? Or is that just a particular area we're talking about? So I just say that, so both sides know what, at least my thinking is on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Iasi?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and that sort of got on to what I was, my questioning was, Dan, is, I mean, the absurd assumption, though, but that would be the definition of the Grand Canyon. It's disturbed because there's a Hoover Dam. I think what we can all agree on is, on this piece of property, on this parcel, it's not disturbed. It's disturbed to the south, and it's disturbed to the north, perhaps, but it's not disturbed on this parcel. So we've got to decide, at what length do we decide that something is disturbed? Something Mr. Moll said, though, is we have to make an exception, perhaps, because this is an interstate freeway. But Mr. Kompadik didn't say it was the width of the disturbance, it was just the fact that you saw the wall there, that you felt trapped. That would happen whether it was one foot wide or 100 feet wide. So under that criteria, it doesn't matter how wide that disturbance was, that that would still be a problem. I think there is some issues with the open space, and we didn't get to everything. I'm a little bit also taken aback by, here's how we're going to solve our hillside ordinances, we'll fill in the thing, we don't have a hillside that we're dealing with, so we shouldn't have to deal with that, because we'll just fill it in, and that'll solve the problem. Like, you know, if I just cut off the top of a mountain, I won't have a hillside ordinance, because it's gone. And I think that defeats the purpose of why we have the hillside ordinance, which I think you were very instrumental in creating, Mr. Kompadik, was helping us come up with that hillside ordinance. Different intent, but that's what we have. So it is your word, Dan, and I appreciate all the comments and the questions we've had tonight, so...
I personally could support a continuance of this to come back, but, because I just have a real problem with the ordinance of what is disturbed and not. Now, this portion isn't disturbed, but the portion below it's disturbed, and the portion above is disturbed. So I'd just like to, I'd like to have it continued and bring back, and like Mr. Hashif, I don't want another complete dog and pony show. Mr. Guston?
You know, I'm willing to go ahead and support the continuance. I don't think that, if there's a way, the ordinance says what it says, and if there's a way to define that what is disturbed and natural, that's, again, I'm sorry to be redundant over again and over again, which is obviously redundant, but that's what really bothers me about this whole thing. So I would move that we would continue this for a minimum of 30 days, and that gives you an opportunity, if it takes a little bit longer than that. Let's do it right, as long as we're going to do it.
Do you continue, you have to have a certain date?
I do have a certain...
Or renotice, which we want them to make the payment for.
Okay.
They're public hearing now?
We don't have to, if we put it to a certain date.
I'll go ahead and second the motion. Why don't we just, the applicant asked for 30 days?
Second meeting?
Yeah, whatever that would be, that way we wouldn't have to renotice it.
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney, you can continue this. If you continue the public hearing, so that the public hearing remains open, you may only take 30 days after you close the public hearing, in which to make a decision. So it's important that you continue the public hearing, if that's what you would like to do tonight.
Mr....
But you have to continue to a certain date and time, though?
Yes, yes, you do, if you're going to continue the public hearing, yes.
So you can't just say, you can't say 30 days, you have to meet 30 days, Mayor.
Second.
We continue this, excuse me, but the April 27th, which I think you'll be returned by then, would be the second meeting in April?
Yes, that'd be very good. Would that be okay with the second?
Now, is this a 6 o'clock hearing, again?
Doesn't have to be.
Well...
You would normally continue it at 6 o'clock. If you begin at 6 o'clock, then you should continue at 6 o'clock.
I think that's advantageous for both sides.
Is that okay for the second?
You bet, yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Oops.
Excuse me, what direction are we, what are we continuing this for? What do you want us to do?
As I believe I heard the applicant say, so they can, they can sit down with you and the appellants, and find out if there's middle ground, if there's not, that's, we're not giving that direction. They ask for that, they're going to provide that direction, so we're asking you, if they come to you and say, they want to meet with you, that you'll accommodate that, and also with the appellant. So I guess I really need to ask the appellants, too, if they would meet with those people.
Would the appellant meet with them?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So is part of that, them providing a hydrology study, or is it just meeting and going through this stuff? Because I think from our perspective, we ought to agree on a third-party hydrologist, and that they would pay for it, because that way, we're both agreeing as to who the consultant would be.
I don't disagree.
Would you agree to that, Mr. Kompadik?
We have, you know, Matt Setti with JBR has a hydrologist on staff. We've done two hydrology experts.
Let's have a mutual.
It's got to be agreed upon by the other side of it, too, otherwise, we're just, you know, we're skewing it again, because it's got to be a full case of trust here on both sides.
Okay. Okay, we'll take care of it. We agree to it.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? You have something to say, sir? Come on up, real quick now. Dragging this thing out.
My name's Matt Setti with JBR Environmental, I'm a hydrologist, been working in the valley for 15 years. I'm a little concerned that you guys are asking engineers and hydrologists for an interpretation of something that is clearly a policy issue. This came up in front of the other board.
You want to close it now, or you want to take your time to study?
No, I'm all for a third-party party to look at it.
Excuse me, sir, you ought to...
I'm just making the point that...
We're not asking hydrologists.
Let me see if I can...
Yes, you step in real quick, because it's going sideways.
I know. I don't contemplate having any additional hydrology studies done. What I contemplate doing is looking at the hydrology we have, put it together on what I said to Pierre Hashif, a bullet point that focuses what the issues are on this, and sitting down, have an all-hands meeting with my clients, and then sitting down with the neighbors, and working something out if we can do it, and I will use my best efforts to do that, and you've got my guarantee on it.
And coming up with what's a drainage way and what's not, or disturbed or not disturbed.
Absolutely, and I would welcome the neighbors to put in writing to me what their concerns are, and I will make sure those concerns are addressed when we come back next time.
If you'd get in touch with the two appellants, they'll tell you what it is, and we'll go from there.
And I'll have Mr. Barrett lead that charge.
That's fine, whoever. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Guston?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Who's adjourned?
This meeting's adjourned.